Good evening. My name is Reverend Alex Lee Cornell. I am the pastor here at Westminster Presbyterian Church. It is my pleasure to welcome you here. Westminster is a place of hospitality, a place of welcome, a place where we value loving our neighbor. And so out of those values, we do ask everyone to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. We do have masks at the back in the North X as well as over here on the music stand. This, and I also wanted to let you all know that out of those values of hospitality and being a part of the community, we are in the midst of a major renovation here at Westminster Presbyterian Church that is going to both secure our preschool so that it can be locked down and safe in the 21st century while simultaneously opening up the rest of the church to the community. Our vision is to be more of a community center that also houses an active Christian worshiping congregation. And so we are excited to host more events like this in the future and wanted to let you know that we exist for you, for people of all faith and for people of no faith to be welcome and to be known. So with that, I am going to pass it to Dory Cranshaw, who is the president of the Briarwood Crime Watch, who is going to say some further remarks before Chief Garcia gets up here.
Thank you, Alex, and good evening to everyone who's here with us live as well as those of you who are at home watching livestream. We appreciate your being here and hope you're going to find this evening as interesting as I think it will be. We appreciate Chief Garcia, who has made time for us this evening to come talk to the two neighborhoods, both Briarwood and Devonshire, which is where we are today in Devonshire, because our neighborhoods are such that their needs are very similar, the problems are very similar, and judging by the wonderful questions that many of you submitted, the concerns are very similar. So we've only got the chief for a short amount of time, so I want to give him as much opportunity to answer the questions that you've submitted as we can. So without further ado, let me introduce our new Dallas Police Chief, Eddie Garcia.
How's everybody doing? All right, fantastic. I know we're in a church, but we can have some energy. All right, I like it. It's good stuff. So it's interesting, every once in a while, you know, I was doing a tour of a complex last week when someone goes, hey, you're the new police chief. I go, wow, I've been here like seven months. It doesn't feel, it feels like a lot longer, but definitely here seven months, love it. Loving the men and women, loving the work we're doing. There's a lot going on. So every once in a while, I'll sit back and I go, man, I just got here in February. There's, there are a lot that's going on, a lot of things that we've done for the community. Really, really excited to be here. You know, obviously, if you've read a little bit or know anything about me, I've, you know, spent nearly 30 years in a police department in California, San Jose, California, which is the 10th largest city in the country. I was the chief of police sir for five years. And to be frank with you, I wasn't ready to retire. I wasn't ready to be done with police work. I wanted to do something different. I wasn't ready to hang up the boots or the badge. I love the work. I love supporting the men and women that do this job and sacrifice for their communities, and I also love supporting our community. And those two things are not mutually exclusive. As I've talked many times, you know, our mantra in the Dallas Police Department is to weed and seed. We're going to weed the criminal element off of our streets, and we're also going to seed it with positivity. So that's what the goal is. Those two things have to be done, and we will continue to do those things. You know, as we look at, and there's a lot of questions I'm going to get to in a minute, but it's been an amazing police department that you have. I've been so impressed since I've got here. There's so many, the ceiling is so high of what we can accomplish with the amazing work. I'm just happy to have a front row seat to see the work that our men and women are doing. There've been challenging days, but mostly have been good days, supportive days from our community. This is just one example. One of the things that I have said, and I've said many times, you know, I come from a place where community groups, businesses, electeds, sometimes are a little afraid to say how much they support their law enforcement. And that's sad. Coming here, you know, we will be held accountable, but there is no doubt that our community, our business community, our neighborhoods, support the work that the men and women here do. And it's amazing to see, particularly coming from somewhere else. Love Dallas. You know, I was, you know, this was always, I was always going to retire in Texas. And I get it, and I get it, trust me. I've gotten enough. Don't Californian my Dallas PD since I've gotten here. So try not to Californian too much. But I was always going to retire in North Texas. I probably, I'm a huge Dallas Cowboy fan, and part of the things I was going to say, if I was going to retire, I'm going to live in a place where I can see my team play. Notice I didn't say win all the time, I just said play. But they're my team, and that's, that's who I am. But I love being here, I love the community, I love my department. And so, you know, let me get into some of the questions you have. I'm going to, we have our folks here, you know, we have Assistant Chief Reyes, Deputy Chief Watson, Major Samento, to answer some of the specific questions that are going on in your neighborhoods. I want to kind of go over some of the things that we're looking at globally from some of the very thoughtful questions that you had. The first question was how crime rate has changed in Dallas from 2020, 2021, and what's being done to reduce crime in our neighborhoods? So, you know, I know there's another question later on that I'll just cover this first one. And so we have a very thoughtful crime plan that we have here in the city of Dallas. Our crime plan is a violent crime plan, and it's based on three premises. It's based on hotspot policing and what that means. What that means is a very small percentage of neighborhood streets and individuals are responsible for a high percentage of the violent crime in any metropolitan city, not just here in the city of Dallas. We partnered up with criminologists to kind of help us walk us through, you know, a good plan that, that we could utilize. And so we focus on those areas from a violent crime perspective, and we focus on those areas in two ways. We focus on those areas from a weeding and seeding perspective. When we talk about violent crime, the individuals that these men and women have sacrificed and taken off the street has nearly doubled in a year. The guns that have been confiscated possessed by criminals has almost doubled in a year. But what's also doubled in a year that I like to talk about too is a community outreach that we've been doing. And when we try to say that we're going to use the same map, we're using that same map not only to weed the criminal element, but use the same map for outreach. And I'll give you a perfect example, you know, just last week, in one of our neighborhoods that we've had to have, we've had, we, one of our targeted grid areas that we've reduced violent crime, and we've been extremely successful in that, what we wanted to do is we wanted to partner in what I said, as we said, hey, listen, find me the elementary school where the kids from this particular neighborhood feed into. And so we partnered with another amazing group, Safe for Dallas, and we were able to give all 400 kids at that school, school supplies on their first day of school. As we always mention, the first time kids see us cannot be in a moment of crisis. And those same officers that were there giving school supplies are the same officers working around the clock as much as they can in those neighborhoods to ensure that that criminal element's not there. The next part of our crime plan is called Place Network Investigations. And what Place Network Investigations is, is the premise that the criminal element meets somewhere, the criminal enterprise meets somewhere to plan their, their crimes and do these things. And that oftentimes, the areas that they do meet are impacted by other outside influences that the police department can't solve on their own. And so as an example, if we see a problem apartment complex, a irresponsible, you know, an irresponsible club, illegal gambling establishment, things of that nature, the police department's going to come in to shut that down. But in addition to that, we need to bring in the city attorney's office to figure out who the landlords are. We've got to see, hey, is there blight around the neighborhood? Are there parks that need to get fixed? Are there homeless issues around that, that individual neighborhood? So as you can see, as it starts snowballing, that other departments are going to be responsible by solving those problems. We're working on that. And then the final piece of our crime plan that we're working on is called Focus Deterrence. And Focus Deterrence and blight. And really what Focus Deterrence is, is by identifying individuals that would be otherwise involved in a life of crime and leading to violence, and having a conversation with these individuals, you know, whether it's individuals on probation, parole, individuals getting released out of county jail, prison, what have you, and letting them know that two things. Number one, that we're going to utilize all the tools available to ensure that they do not victimize our community, and that we will not allow them to do that. But then the, the next part is very important and critical, is that we have the programs in place that if they do want to get out of that life, that we want to help them get out of that life, because we want to strengthen our city and our community, and that's what we're doing. And then finally, also with that piece is blight reduction. And so as we look at the blight reduction, that's something important as well, because we want to strengthen all of our neighborhoods. All neighborhoods are different in the city of Dallas. You know, as I've gone, we say about seven stations, really eight if you combine CBD and downtown. But if you look at our seven stations, each of our seven stations have different priorities that are important to them. And so in this area, the, your priorities may be a little bit different than other places in the city. But overall, our mission right now is to really reduce that violent crime in our city to ensure that everyone knows that the city of Dallas is one. We're not South, North, East, West. We're one Dallas, where it's a place where you could be successful, where you can live, laugh, fun, have a great time, raise a family, and that's what we want to do, with the ultimate goal of making Dallas one of the, one of the safest, largest cities in this country. And I know that we have the men and women to do that. We certainly have the support from our men and, from our community, our business community, and we're really going to strive to do that. When you look at our violent crime stats, you know, as an example, and I know a lot of things we'll get in here with property crime and other things that we can do in this area, but when you look at our violent crime stats, everything is trending down. When we asked to talk about the violent crime plan a few months back to council, we stayed away, shied away, we stayed away on purpose from percentages. The goal was, frankly, since 2018, violent crime has been trending up. And we're able now to reverse that trend in these last few months where it's coming down. And so although we still have to wrap our arms around aggravated assault, which is up a little over 4% citywide throughout the year, we've been getting to see a decrease in the amount of incidents of aggravated assaults that we're having. In the month of May, we were 19 murders above where we were last year. In February, we're about 75% above the murder rate that we had the year before. Today, as we sit, because of the work of our community, because of the amazing work of your men and women, we're eight murders below where we were last year. Now, every, every life is precious, and as I've said many times, we have a disparity with murder. And with, if we can lower, we can lower our homicide rate by 100, we're not going to be celebrating too much collectively as a community and a city, in my belief, if that disparity of the individuals who are being victimized continue to be the same. But a rising tide lifts all ships, and sometimes we have to sit and celebrate the victories that the community, the city, and the Dallas Police Department can share together. There's going to be great days, as we've had, there will be challenging days. But we're on the right trajectory, the team has bought in, and we're moving forward. In this particular area with violent crime, you have four less offenses in this, in this area than you did last year. However, the challenges continue to be motor vehicle break-ins, and I'm sure we'll discuss a little bit in detail later on, where you're 17 incidents over where you were last year, and three burglaries over where you were last year. And that's, that's where we're at, right there. Now, I will say that, you know, although violent crime is down considerably, you know, and nonviolent crime is, is up a little bit, that the main driver in this area is those BMVs, or those motor vehicle break-ins. And although some can say, oh, well, you're just concentrating on violent crime, and yes, we are concentrating on violent crime, but that doesn't mean that your leadership, that your men and women, that your officers that are working in this area cannot concentrate on other things that are affecting this, this particular area, and we will strive to do that. The next question was, any new hiring programs that we're, that we're doing? Well, you know, there's two big things that we need to, we need to address, and that's our hiring communications and fixing that issue. We've, we're in our budget that will, that's being discussed right now. We have a lot of positions that we're adding to our communication center. We're bringing up the compensation for our dispatchers and call takers, which is extremely important. And so we've been doing a lot, a big hiring push and recognizing where we're at from there. You know, the other piece is because of the great support from the mayor, from council members, and from our city manager, is that with hope, we're going to have 250 new police officer positions that we'll be, that we'll be implementing this year and next year, with the hope of getting this police department to 3200 sworn, which we will continue to grow, but it's a great start. And so going on those hiring programs is huge. Actually, I just had a meeting this morning with Dallas College as an example, to try to come up with a feeder program for some of the recruits, so that we can ensure that as many of our recruits that are starting the academy are from the area as best we can, and getting some of these, these young adults that are in some of our great programs in Dallas ISD from a P-Tech program to get them involved in certain areas, so that once they're ready to go, we can hire. I know this will dovetail into another, the next question about dealing with police recruitment and retention challenges, and to make sure that officers don't get poached by other cities. Great question, because I've lived through that in my old, in my old life, and I will tell you that right now, our, you know, what we're, what our attrition rates are a little bit lower than what we anticipated, our attrition rates to be. Right now, we're mostly losing officers, and I don't even want to say losing officers, because you know what, an officer that retires, an officer that retired has worked very, very hard in their career. But we're basically, our officers are leaving because of retirement and not leaving because they're finding other cities more attractive, which is huge. One of the dynamics that I'll say, that things that matter, I'll tell you this, from a law enforcement perspective, and I'll speak about the men and women, they do an amazing job, because they want to feel supported. They want to feel like they matter, and I'll tell you, I've seen that. And when, as an example, the city council or city budget calls for 250 officers, I'll just say, I'll call the elephant in the room, that's not happening everywhere. That shows the support for the men and women, that, that sacrifice, that know that their communities need them. And I say that very often, because I will say this here, and I'm not a stay-in-the-office kind of chief, but I've not yet met a neighborhood, a neighborhood that's impacted by crime in the city of Dallas, regardless of language spoken, economic status, or racial makeup, that has ever asked me for less officers in their neighborhood. Not one, not a single one. And so I say that, that our communities want to be, expect to be, and we will absolutely treat them fairly, but they don't want us to go away. And so when you have that commitment from your city leadership, that's something right then and there that says to officers, I feel appreciated here, I don't need to go somewhere else. You know, with the budget process, with the market rate that they gave the officers as well, to pay the officers and compensate the officers at a level that they may not find in other cities, or at least at the same, is something that's going to retain our officers. We're going to have policies in place where our officers will be able to gain more experience, work different units, so that I can tell an officer, a future recruit, hey, you know what, you can become whatever you want in the Dallas Police Department, and not have to wait 15 years to do it. We're working on those type of programs as well. And so we certainly have seen an excitement. We want our officers to do their jobs, and their jobs are to increase community trust, but to take the criminal element and to solve our community's problems. And we're trying to do our best to put our officers in the best position to do that. And I'll be frank, I call myself a blue collar chief, and I say that because, you know, I, you know, I didn't go to the FBI Academy, I didn't go to the, some other classes that some other people go to, that God bless them if they do. But as I was coming up as a police officer, I was coaching my sons in baseball and football, and I couldn't just walk away and go somewhere for additional training. So I learned how to be a police chief and how to be a police officer by being a police officer, by working the units. You know, I don't want to make this a resume, but I've worked narcotics enforcement, I've been on the SWAT team, I've been a homicide investigator, I've worked vice, I've worked criminal intelligence. And, you know, and I see that, and I remember what it felt like to work in those units and the type of direction that I wanted. And so, you know, I'm not perfect, but oftentimes, I try to put myself in that position and ask myself, what would I have wanted to see if I was an officer? You know, I've sat across from a homicide suspect, I've been on a perimeter for hours, I've been on the entries. What support do my men and women need to get their job done and to increase that trust? So I truly think that looking forward in the future, particularly that we continue the trajectory that we're going, that those days of seeing a mass exodus and seeing officers go to other places or behind us, and I'm, we're hopeful that, we're hopeful that that continues. Latest on increasing police reserves, that's another question that we had. You know, like, we're still feeling the impacts of the pandemic, like a lot of other professions are, but the reality of it is with our, with our reserve program, about 75% or so are former, 75% of our reserve program are retired Dallas PD officers. And the dynamic was, and I know this was true in California, because we went through it, that back in the early 90s, I got hired in the early 90s, and back in the early 90s in California, you had a, a very short academy that you would need to go to to become a reserve. And then later on, they changed it where you had to go to the exact same training that we, that, that a regular police officer has to do. So recruiting is not as easy as, as you would, as one would think, because generally speaking, you're looking at retired police officers that would want to come to DPD to be reserves. But we continue to push for that, we continue to try to recruit for that as best we can. We, our reserves do an amazing job, they donate, I can't even, I don't know the hours off the top of my head, but they don't know, donate an enormous amount of hours for our city, for our community, and particularly in times where we need them. You know, oftentimes, if, if people have felt there'd been an uptick in the optics or violent crime in certain areas, I mean, we, we will utilize our reserves to, you know, to be a presence, so that our community feels safer. Our reserves, we're trying to look at other ways to use our reserves as well, thinking outside the box, in a manner in which would be most beneficial to the department, but at the same time, making sure that the work they do is efficient and making sure nothing slips through the cracks. So we're always constantly looking at that. 911, you know, we're augmenting our staffing levels within communications, and we've added, and we've added actually, police officers to answer 911 calls. You know, oftentimes, we were in a crisis a few weeks back, and what we needed to do is we had to ensure that individuals were there to answer the 911 call for service. We understood that, we heard that loud and clear. So one of the things we did, we switched our academy before they started their third phase to go to the communication center, get trained, so that they can pick up a little bit of the slack from the amazing work that our call takers do right now, because they were, they were in a dire situation. And as we thought through that and started to work through, one of the things we're going to continue to do is to ensure our police academies also do a few weeks, a couple weeks in that communication center, because there's nothing, there was no negative side to it. The fact that a police officer can go into the dispatch center to see what the world is like there, to ensure that they see what their hardworking dispatchers and call takers undertake, there's nothing wrong with that, and that's something that, a positive that came out of this, that they will be trained in that, which is important. You know, we also offered overtime to department members who were trained in 911, and so far, we've trained over 349 individuals. You know, we recommended taking, having more call takers and support staff to answer 911, and we're going to get additional support staff hopefully in this new budget of 61s, which is very, very important. Now, you know, long-term strategy we're implementing to ensure we keep up with the staffing needs that are related to turnover and increasing call volumes, and to be proactive on staffing requests. And I will say this, and again, you know, like I said, in police work, celebrate the good days, knowing that there's going to be bumps along the road. But we'll say that since implementing our staffing model at 911, we've increased our 911 grade of service from a 45%, which was not good, to almost 89%. And the national standard is 90%. So we're, we were in a crisis a few, a few weeks back, but we're gaining a lot of ground, and with our ultimate goal of always being at that 90%, and we're going to get there. We're going to get there, because there's a lot of great work by the commanders of this police department and by that civilian staff working in the 911 center. Why our alarm response time's so slow? We're meeting our, we're currently meeting our eight-minute goal to respond to priority one calls. You know, communications is also working with consultants to identify and implement the process to improve response for our priority two calls. You know, all calls are based on priority. And, you know, at times, the calls may take longer to respond, because there's either higher priority calls that we need, or the reality of it is, and I've made no secret about it, we need to grow as a police department, there's no question about it. And as we grow, those response times will get better as well. Here's a good one, and we'll, you know, I want, later, we'll have the, your staff come up and discuss a little bit more, but the issues in the neighborhoods, and the issues regarding the break-ins and what else can be done to reduce them. Well, there's a few things that we can do. Continue the important Crime Watch meetings that you do. We can't do it alone, and we need your help. You know, we talk about police work as intelligence and data-driven. The best intelligence comes from inside this room. That's where the best intel, I don't come up from a computer. The best intelligence that we have comes from inside this room, so we need to utilize that. You know, you see something, say something. Report suspicious activity to us in any way that you can. You know, obviously, and then, you know, lock and take and hide your valuables that are in cars, and don't make your, don't make a vehicle, I'm not trying to pass the onus on to you, obviously, the, the onus goes on the criminals that are breaking into your car. So I'm not saying the onus on you, but I'm saying, let's try to make it less attractive for them to do that. Be smart, and, you know, again, let's not leave anything in there that a thief can steal. But ultimately, and as we work with them, we got to work honestly for the, that data-driven perspective, and work closer with you as we see those numbers rise. Listen, we have seen, we have seen how hotspot policing works, okay? When we've put officers in certain areas in certain times, we've seen the reduction in violent crime. There is nothing that would tell me that it wouldn't be the same with other types of crimes as well. So we're going to be utilizing this model quite a bit when we're looking at attacking those type of problems. You know, what's the ability to engage in public-private partnerships where the neighborhood raises money for speed sign limits and digital speed limit readers? Can we get the city to install? The issue with that as a partnership needs to actually be with Public Works, since, you know, the donation requires them to install the signs. But we've seen those public, those public-private partnerships work in many places. So it's not that they can't work, we would just need to utilize and go through the right, you know, the right method to do that. Street racing is a concern. Yes, it's absolutely a concern, it's been a concern, well, I was going to say when I got here, but even before I got here, but your men and women are doing an amazing job. One of the things that I will say, we are not going to arrest our way out of the racing issue. One of the dynamics that we're looking at is the method to use engineering. Okay, one of the dynamics of engineering is we look at engineering, and we have to make some of these streets less attractive for these individuals to do these, whether violent stunts at intersections or long stretches of roadway that don't have brakes in them. We, we need to do something from an engineering perspective, because we can't put a police officer at every corner. We have piloted a few methods to make intersections less attractive by putting up, I know we always come up with a name for them, but the little bumps, is that what we're going to go, did you get the official name? What are they called?
Raised traffic markers.
Raised traffic markers, AKA the little bumps on the road, that I'll go ahead and say. But it makes the intersection less attractive for individuals to do their donuts and spinouts. But finally, what I just cannot, I cannot talk more about the proactive work that the men and women are doing. It's not, it's not, it's a very dangerous job to do what they do, particularly when they go into these areas. People saw the news story about what our officers did last weekend with regard to the racing issues and the amount of individuals that they took off the street. But just to date, I mean, from, and these numbers are just from February 19th to August 15th. Our street racing detail, and I say this because, on two things. Number one, I'm going to say this, that we're not going to solve this problem by arresting and towing cars, we're not, only, but we need to. And oftentimes, what's lost is, you know, my job is to ensure that you know the amazing work that your men and women are doing. And since February 19th, our street racing task force has made 3,858 traffic stops related to street racing. They've issued 560 hazardous citations, they've given over 2,500 regulatory citations, they've given 316 spectator citations, they've towed 411 cars, they've answered over 3,900 calls for service, they've made 81 felony arrests, 544 misdemeanor arrests, they've taken 86 guns off the street, 120 drug cases, and have recovered 22 stolen vehicles. And again, I say that, we, your police officers are doing amazing work, but again, we need to combine our efforts with that engineering piece, and we are working closely with the city entities to help us do that, which is, which is fantastic. So there's a couple of questions here, and I don't mean to be coy about it, but it talked about, talking about my decisions, the decisions regarding the district attorney's office to prosecute crimes. And I'm going to tell you exactly what I've told my men and women at stations. It is not our job to figure out what the district attorney is going to prosecute for or not. Our job is to ask ourselves, is something right or wrong to do, as an example? Is it efficient use of our time? And if we can answer those questions, and it's on the books, our job is to do our job at that level on at that level on a basis of probable cause to make an arrest. The threshold of a district attorney's office is to prove things beyond a reasonable doubt. We don't have that threshold in law enforcement. Our threshold is probable cause. And so what I tell to my men and women, I say, you know, if we're frustrated at times with the way things go, the people who suffer the most are our community and our neighborhoods. And so if we get called 20 times to come back to deal with the same problem that a neighborhood has, we come back 20 times to take care of that problem. I'm not a big passing the buck, pointing fingers or what have you, we need to do our jobs and do those to the best of our ability for you. And so I don't get caught up in that, yes, there's times where I've had conversations with the DA about certain things, and generally, we've met eye to eye on some. We're not going to agree on everything, but what I can tell you is, I can control what I can control, he controls what he controls, I know the issues with bail and things of that nature, that is not on the DA, that is on the judges, so that's the third part of the equation. So you get involved into that, you got to just control what you control. We got to continue to support our officers and our men and women, that when they do what they have to do for our community, they do it legally, professionally, effectively. And that's what I tell them when it comes to those type, those type of questions. We're dealing, one of the biggest, big things that we're very proud of is how we deal with mental resources to improve outcomes and interventions with mentally ill. I'll tell you, we're very proud of our Rite Care program, you know, our Rite Care program that combines a clinician with a medic and an officer. We're increasing our teams in this budget from five, we're doubling from five to 10, and we could use more, but that's a great start for us, and it's something that we're very proud of, that I think we could, we are a model, and there's other systems that work as well, but we're happy with that. We do too much in law enforcement when it comes to that particular issue, and having that help from individuals that are experts helps our men and women deal with the issue, and also helps the individual who's suffering from a crisis. I think that kind of covers a lot of it.
Yeah. Wouldn't you talk about the effectiveness of your new initiatives?
So again, you know, that kind of dovetails, you know, a lot of that dovetails with, when it comes to positive results from the implementation of my plan, what are the ideas on solutions to the crime in Dallas? The one thing I want to say to people who say, that's not my plan, it is not my plan, it's the plan of the Dallas Police Department. I'll tell you what, any police chief can come up with the best plan in the world, and if you don't have amazing men and women that are implementing that plan, you might as well, you're like a football coach that puts in a play that doesn't work. And so our officers, all we've done is to try to do our best to put them in positions to succeed, and let our officers in our community win, because we've, we've, I think collectively as a city and a department, we've been beaten up these last couple of years, and we want to do well for you, and we want to put our officers in the best positions to have them succeed for you. And so those are working well, we're happy with them, as I mentioned before, there's going to be, there's good days, and there'll be challenging days, I'm not, and I've said this, this is not victory by any stretch of the imagination, success is a journey, not a destination, it's in the doing that's more important than the outcome. We'll never get to the goal line, but we always have to show our community and our residents that we're moving forward and moving that ball to get there. You know, ideas to solutions to reduce crime, again, we're going to stay true to the crime plan, there's no question about it, we're going to do that. You know, there's one question here, as a police chief, that you are horrified at the image of police brutality and innocent killings of our citizens such as George Floyd and others at the hands of police officers. However, I expect that some of the reactions and suggested solutions to the injustices leave you equally disturbed. Given the spotlight that's been placed on our police officers nationwide, what do you suggest is a proper remedy for rebuilding the African-American community's trust in our police force and improving the public perception of the police? Well, one of the things that I will, that I will talk about is, from those perceptions that we see, and I'll go back to what I originally said, I've not met a neighborhood here in the city of Dallas impacted by violent crime, regardless of racial makeup, language spoken, economic status, that does not want the police in their neighborhood. And oftentimes, that there's a reconciliation that needs to be done there, because that hasn't existed here, I, I don't see it in a neighborhood. There may be community groups that say that, but I often say, there's a difference between community groups, which are necessary, and actual neighborhoods impacted by violent crime. And I offer to you that the latter has never told me that. So one of the things that we have to do, we need to continue to strive in our communities to be fair. We need to strive in our communities to ensure that they know where we have been, that we understand that the things we do so proudly now, and the badge we wear so proudly now, didn't always shine so bright. We've made mistakes, and we need to own up for those mistakes. We need to recognize that because of those mistakes is why we can't just walk into living rooms everywhere in the city of Dallas or across this country and instantly be felt that we're being respected, that we have to work hard for it, and that's okay. We look not only with our African-American community, but our Latino community. A few weeks ago, when we took part in the memorial for Santos Rodriguez, recognizing where we've been, apologizing for what we've done, that's important. That's how we start rebuilding, by admitting where we've done wrong and saying, we're a new department, we're going to strive for excellence. And I'll tell you what, doing these, you know, we were in a, a perfect storm, so to speak, with obviously the protests of last summer, George Floyd, and the inability to meet, the inability to sit in a room and have a conversation. That was a perfect storm, and I don't know, I've been a police chief for a while, and a police officer for a while, there was no greater misery than not being able to speak to the, our communities just like this and have conversations. So I'm hopeful that we're able to stabilize with our current pandemic situation, to continue these type of conversations, and continue to what we're trying to do. You know, my goal for ABLE, really as active bystander for law enforcement, is the fact that we all have a responsibility. The responsibility to ensure an officer doesn't use excessive force, the responsibility that an officer doesn't speak rudely to a resident, that doesn't lose his or her temper, that's not just my responsibility, that's not the chief's responsibility, that's not the major's responsibility, it's all of our responsibility. That we need to recognize when every time we have this uniform on, every time we are in public, it is a commercial for our profession, not just a commercial for the Dallas Police Department, it is a commercial for our profession. We need to take pride in the fact, and I know we do, that we don't want anyone tarnishing this badge, and particularly this patch. And so it's a responsibility for us to do it, that's what ABLE allows us to do, we've seen some early results of it, we have credible individuals training in that perspective, and we're very excited, you know, very excited to, to, to continue with that. One of the last questions, it said, you know, that it says, when I was becoming the chief, I mentioned that made mistakes before, and that I learned from those mistakes. You know, interesting, finish the last one. Interesting, we all make mistakes, you know what, we're always learning, and there's some things as a police chief, is you got to take ownership for things. You know, I stand up for my men and women, regardless of the outside noise, when they're right, I'll die for them. Regardless of the outside noise, when they're right, they're right. And when we're wrong, we need to admit we're wrong. And that's something that on both sides builds credibility, to ensure that we're always putting into that emotional bank account. Who read Stephen Covey's book, Seven Habits of Highly Effective People? Anyway, anyway, all right, I had to read that for a promotional exam, and the only, one of the good things that I got out of that was the emotional bank account. You know, to truly understand what the emotional bank account we have and who we have them with, and make sure we never are overdrawn, and our, men and women's emotional bank account is as important as our community's emotional bank account, as important as the city leader's emotional bank account, and we always have to make sure they're not overdrawn. And, you know, making sure that you're honest, open, with both, making sure that everything you say, everything you say can be taken a different way is very, very important. I'm a passionate guy, I'm not going to lie to you. Passionate guy, I wear my emotions on my sleeve oftentimes, and sometimes you got to put those in check a little bit. But it's who I am, I let them out eventually, but you know what, that's, that's who I am. You know, I tell you, I'm living, I'm living a dream. You know, I moved from San Juan, Puerto Rico to San Jose, California, I didn't speak English. I was a Cowboy fan before I even spoke a lick of English. I learned English watching Roger Staubach running around, and you know, to be able to, you know, learn English, speak English, even though Puerto Rico's part of the United States, probably, we speak Spanish in Puerto Rico, and not only to be, have been the police chief in one major city, but now being honored to the police chief here, a place that was always close, a destination spot, and having these men and women seeing the front row, their, their work, and having a front row seat to the work is amazing. You know, the final question, you know, what keeps me up at night? You know, I get a call after midnight, and I dread, dread hearing that one of my men and women was hurt. I'm not quite certain, and I'm not going to be cute about it and say there's anything else, but what keeps me up at night are my men and women doing what I am asking for them to do and getting hurt doing it. That's what keeps me up at night. Okay, that covers it.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we appreciate the chief coming and making time for us this evening, and for all of you who are with us both in person and online, we appreciate you as well, and please continue to support your neighborhood associations, both Briarwood, Devonshire, or for those of you who may live in other areas, you probably have a neighborhood association as well. And collectively, we will continue to make Dallas and our neighborhoods better places to live. So thank you one and all, and good night.